All right, I think if all of our mics are hot, Joe, if you give me a thumbs up there. Good, thank you. All right, good morning. I will now call to order the Monday, May 19, 2025 Town Council Meeting. If you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is the approval of the May 19, 2025 claims. Are there any questions from councilors? I would entertain a motion.
With to approve.
First from Vice President Burke.
Second.
The second from Councilor McAldery. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, seven in favor, zero opposed. Up next is request to speak on agenda items. Amy, do we have any requests to speak?
No.
All right, we will move quickly to the administration update, Mayor Administration update, and we have Mayor Stare with us this morning.
Morning, everyone. I just have a couple of quick notes this morning, and the first that I have is the first quarter financial report. There is a memo in your packets on our financial performance in the first quarter of the year. I think the high points are that all of our accounts are reconciled, all of our reporting is up to date, and just a couple of quick highlights that I wanted to point out. Our miscellaneous revenue collection as of March 31st was just over $10.5 million, which is about 28% of what we expect for the year. Now, this includes everything but the property tax distributions, which of course is our main source of revenue. We'll get that in June and in December. And also, our departments have spent just under 20% of the budgeted amount that they have in the first quarter, so that means, you know, we are running efficiently here, and I think that bodes well as we prepare for the 2026 budget season, and we'll have to factor in, of course, the property tax changes that were made by the state legislature. And speaking of that, our five-year financial analyst analysis is expected soon. That'll come from our friends at Crowe. They are going to draft a new five-year plan from the one we had last year that considers the property tax cuts from Senate Bill One. The reason we haven't had this before now is that we're waiting for information from the Department of Local Government Finance to complete the analysis. We should get that this week. In fact, it's due today, but we'll see. We hope to get it this week, and we will begin working through that with our department heads, and we will obviously share that with all of you and share that publicly as we go through the 2026 budget process. It is a lot to digest, so we are working to assess the impact that it will have on our operations, not just in 2026, but also over the next five years. The next thing I have is just a quick note concerning the Turkeyfoot Pedestrian Bridge. It will be closed to foot traffic, likely starting in mid-June. Repairs will take place there, and it will reopen in the fall of 2025. So basically, what's happening there is the wooden approaches will be replaced with concrete and steel. That will increase the lifespan of the bridge and also make it more accessible for park maintenance and emergency services. All adjacent public areas around the bridge will remain open, including the Turkeyfoot Parking Lot, the Nature Park, the Eagle Creek Trail through Holiday Farms. All of that will remain open during this time. And one note, of course, is that the repairs will make the bridge golf cart accessible, and I know that the Parks Board and the Town Council are addressing that issue, and we will do what we can to help you publicize that process as we go forward here in the next couple of weeks. And finally, I just want to say a quick word about our Youth Advisory Council, who has turned up in strength today. And I really do believe that getting these young people engaged is one of the best things we've done in the last year and a half. This year, we have 22 members representing several local high schools, as well as homeschooled students. We have nine graduating seniors this year, and they're going to be going to Purdue, IU, Notre Dame, George Washington, Kentucky, Kenyon, and the University of Michigan. I'm really, I'm really very proud of them. It has been great to work with them, and they have done great things over this past year. I don't know that we listen enough to the teenagers around us, but I think this group has ideas that are worthy for all of us to listen to. So I'm going to yield the rest of my time for a short presentation that will give you a view of what this important group has done, and for that, we have the MYAC president, Noah Alt. Noah?
Good morning, Town Council members. My name is Noah Alt, and I'm honored to be here. We represent the 2024 through 2025 Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, and we're excited to share the meaningful work we've done this year and the insights that we've gained from Zionsville's next generation. This year, MYAC explored leadership, local government, and community impact through engaging speakers, site visits, and hands-on learning. From police and fire station visits to economic development discussions, we gained a deeper appreciation for how Zionsville works and how we can contribute. On April 24th, we had a fantastic day at the Indiana State House. We met with Senator Ford, Representatives Becky Cash and Hunter Smith, Jeff Papa, Comptroller Elise Nishala, and even the governor. We learned about lobbying, State House history, and how bills are passed. We had numerous speakers throughout the year, teaching us how our town operates. We talked about economic development, leadership, and municipal finances. We also had a great showing for the cleanup day on Main Street last month. My entire family of 10 was able to join us, and it was a lot of fun. Our last meeting this year will be at the wastewater treatment facility. A standout moment was hosting the Soul of Civility Book Talk at the Hussy Mayfield Memorial Public Library. We talked about economic development, leadership, and municipal finance. We also had a great showing for this, and it sparked powerful conversations about respect, dialogue, and how our shared civic responsibilities are especially important for the next generation. We also prepared a survey for the group to give you a glimpse of all of what the future holds for Zionsville. Oh, I apologize. Many students love our town, but their long-term commitment depends on economic growth. They're looking for a Zionsville that offers a vibrant, inclusive community, as well as a culture that has opportunities for careers. Some of the top priorities that stood out loud and clear were affordable housing, career opportunities, and moderate amenities. Our peers want to stay, but Zionsville must evolve for that future to happen. Despite these challenges, we deeply value Zionsville's charm, safety, and strong community spirit. Main Street, the rail trail, and our parks are places that we're able to connect with. We love Zionsville because it truly feels like home. I'm so proud of all 22 of our members. Each one contributed ideas, time, and passion to make our town even better. Thank you so much for listening and for your continued support and leadership. With your help, we can ensure that Zionsville remains not just a great hometown, but a great future town as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah.
I would imagine the Youth Advisory Council needs to get to school. Is that correct? Do you guys want to stick around, or do you guys need to get out of here? You're welcome to get out of here if you'd like to. All right, very good.
Going to stay for 15 more minutes.
All right. Up first on the agenda for old business is the, is an ord, a consideration of an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance, petition 2025-240A. This is ordinance 2025-12, continued from our May 5 meeting. We have Mike Dale here to talk through. Any questions, concerns? I think Mike or Justin was there, were there some amendments that we're going to go through on this that you guys wanted to present this morning?
Good morning. I think we are still working through some possible amendments and trying to understand exactly the best way to move forward, so I think the request today would be to continue and table it one more time.
Got it. That will be, so we had, we heard this, or this came through the Plan Commission, so we've got 90 days, so we're still well within that, so.
Yes, sir.
We should be, should be fine there. We need, do we want to continue it to the next meeting, or do we want to continue it 30 days?
30.
Just 30 days? Well, I mean, I think similar to the last ordinance, if we continue it to the next meeting, it'll be a first-month meeting. We can take action and then send it back to the Plan Commission as opposed if we wait 30 days, it'll be essentially a 40, it'll be essentially a 60-day process.
Agreed.
Is that right?
I think the next meeting makes sense.
Yeah. Got it. Okay. All right, then I'll make a motion to continue to our next meeting.
Second.
I got a second from Councilor Sampson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, seven in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Up next is a consideration of an ordinance regarding wastewater construction standards. This is ordinance 2025-14. This is a final reading, and we have Lance here if there are any questions from councilors. I noticed there are, obviously would note there are no changes from the ordinance last time, so. Any questions from councilors? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
First from Councilor Melton. Second from Vice President Burke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, seven in favor, zero opposed. First item of new business is Pathways Committee Presentation, and I notice Pathways Committee's here, and Councilor Melton, if you want to introduce.
Good morning. This is Brad Gressel. He's going to present on the, on behalf of the Pathways Committee this morning. There's several other Pathways Committee members in the audience, and I just want to mention that this is a great group of people from diverse backgrounds, diverse areas of Zionsville, and they all have different interests in the area, or their areas because of their geographical location throughout Zionsville. So these are people that take time out of their busy schedules with kids, sports, and all kinds of other activities, and they meet, and previously it was once a month, now they're about every two months, and these are people that utilize these pathways around Zionsville. Some of them on a really regular basis. People like me, not as often, but we do still enjoy these pathways and the connectivity of the town of Zionsville's pathway system, and I'll hand it over to Brad Gressel from here.
Good morning, Council members. As Craig said, Brad Gressel, I'll present, every year since the ordinance changed last year, we just present kind of our top recommendations to the council once a year, and this year we've got that, as well as a couple safety observations. So I'll jump right in. I think it's always helpful to kind of remind everyone, what is the Pathways Committee? So our charter is, we're an advisory committee that recommends new pathways, locations, and policies while promoting the benefits of Zionsville's Pathways Network. There's seven, seven members. We are on a one-year term, and we're appointed by either this body, the council, or through the mayor, and Craig Melton, council, sits on as a voting member, is one of the seven. So it's myself, Dan, Emily, Councilor Melton, Jody, Beth, and Kim. I think most of them are here today, so. As well, one other recent addition as of last year is every meeting, we now have at least one Zionsville DPW member that joins our meetings, often Lance, which has been extremely helpful for our discussions, so that's been a great change. A couple updates from last year. I think one of them, we hear a lot of terms thrown around, it would be helpful, there's pathways, trails, sidewalks, even not on here, the greenways. So just to clarify, you know, sidewalks are kind of what you'll see outside of businesses or homes and subdivision areas, kind of servicing those areas. Trails would be what would run through parks areas, or the rail trail would be a trail. And then, greenways basically run along waterways, and then pathways, the way we look at them here in town is, those are kind of the connections. So how do we get between all those different terms, or how do we service different areas around town? One other update as of last year, the town website, if you go under Pathways Committee, now has a button to directly send to us for comments, concerns, recommendations. So we want everyone to know that, because we do like receiving those and discuss those at all of our meetings. We also have, and we'll keep updating this, but we've got an updated criteria, so we're not just putting out ideas that we like. We run them through currently a seven-point criteria to evaluate which pathways, you know, most impactful, essentially. So those are, does it fill a gap between existing paths? Does it provide access to key destinations, you know, because it get to the village, to schools, to parks? Does it service a significant number of people versus just a few? Does it improve safety? And we really focus especially on children. Is the terrain relatively easy to build on? We're not engineers, but there's always drainage and rideaways and things that we can't see, but if, you know, if there's a ravine, it's probably not a great location for a path. Is land acquisition, is it minimal or no land acquisition? And then, is the route, we say protected, but from future removal? So if a road's going to get widened or a development's going to happen, we don't want to build a path and then have it torn out. It's not a, not a great decision. So with that being said, we have five pathways that have risen to the top with that criteria this year, and a couple quick safety concerns to call out. So number one, just east out here where we sit now, off Oak Street, we have the rail trail, and currently, the only access points directly to it are here at Town Hall, or kind of Community Church on the other side, or you go down into the neighborhood, like off Knight Street. So where we have circled in red there, we've identified as a great location for a direct, short pathway on the north and south side, just to get users more access to the, to the trail. We see that as, you know, not a long distance, but would, would make a big impact. Number two is, and some of these you'll see carryover from, from last year, we just keep them on until, you know, projects are finalized or priorities change, but the Michigan Road path, which you'll see in red or the missing sections, it would essentially connect Opelousa down to Willow. The, the recent, this council voted on the TIF, and then the recent PUD expansion of Holiday Farms for the Assisted Living Project. So with that, there is now 655K that will come off the, the top of that TIF that's dedicated towards funding this path. Now, I will note that that's also, that money is going to pay for their required frontage path, and then also the engineering, you know, surveying work, and I know design work for the paths is underway, so what's left will go towards those, those areas, and then discussions with individual homeowners and, like Bridlewood and Brittany Chase are underway. So again, keeping this on here until this is finalized. Location three, if you look at Templin Road, and the reason this has risen up in the rankings is the relatively recent addition of the traffic light signal, Michigan Road and Templin, that has a crosswalk at it now, as well as a little west, Little Eagle Creek, there's a, the newer bridge that was put on, actually has a path already on the, the south side of it. So this red portion, only 1,400 feet would complete that connection on the south side, and not only would this service those living east of Michigan Road that could get west and then down to Willow and to the village, but also those living west, kind of up on Willow Road, could get down, then down Michigan Road to, you know, all the way down to the new crosswalk improvements for the farm at 116th. So this is one that, you know, would service quite a few residents. Location four is Ottinger, and this is another carryover. This is out west of town, just north of the Royal Run Development. They have a lot of pass on the out, their frontage, kind of just south of Lowe's, but there's a section just in front of their entrance, it's 300 feet in front of that, that single residence there. Currently, the path comes up to that and just feeds right out into the road, so this would be one that I know Royal Run has also expressed interest in, they'd be willing to take their entrance signs out to make it a little easier, but another one that a lot of children in that, in that area, in a growing part of town. And then, number five is up 975, so north Pleasant View Road. Now that we have the relatively new crosswalk that was added, signaled crosswalk across 975 at Oak Ridge, the, the residents in the northwest of this picture, at the Cedar Bend, that is a older neighborhood that didn't have the setbacks and pass that were installed when it was built, so this is one that 650 feet on the east side would connect it down and then allow it to, to use that crosswalk. So that's a new addition for this year. And then, there are a couple that, there's reasons why these aren't on the top of our list, but with ongoing discussions around town and the county, we thought these are, these are good to mention. On the left is Turkeyfoot, so that Turkeyfoot Road from the park down to basically Mulberry Street. There's a lot of people in the north there and in the south and no connection. The, we've also seen in the, the comprehensive plan discussions, or recommendations, I guess, I don't know if they'll be adopted, but recommendations for an east-west connection in that area, and so if that was to come to fruition, certainly a connection up Turkeyfoot Road would, would make a lot of sense. So the one in the middle, this is the west of town in the Anson area, so another growing area. This one, not all Zionsville land, so this would be certainly a partnership between the town, Whitestown, and the county, but you see the Anson area and basically Moon Meadow, the school, the path ends there, there's a gap, and then the New Harvest Park neighborhood and all the, the areas being built north. There's complexity in this area. We know narrow roads, narrow bridge, at least one cemetery, so if, if there were road improvement, realignment projects that, that happen, this would be very impactful with our metrics. And then on the right is, would be one of those greenway situations, so if you look between the rail trail and then south of the village there in Zionsville Road, as that area potentially gets realigned and development occurs, we certainly see that as, as a great opportunity to bring a greenway connection between those two areas. A couple quick safety observations around town, there are a lot of areas where we've put in paths that, as I mentioned before, neighborhoods may not have the setbacks like more modern neighborhoods would have now, deeper rideaways, and so when we come in and put paths, a lot of times to, to avoid land acquisition or removing a lot of, you know, entrance signs, the paths are relatively close to the road. That's one of the situations along Mulberry Street. It's great that we have that new, new path that was put in last year, the new crosswalk there, but as you'll see in the bottom left, the path and the road basically become one together. So we certainly understand the limitations with that, but if, if there are ever opportunities to, to separate that with the distance, it can be uncomfortable when you're, you know, school's let out and you're walking along that road. So distance or physical separations with, up off Marysville, we've got some of those areas that have those curbs that have been put in, could be an option in the future for other paths. And then up off Pleasant View Road on the right there, in front of like Spring Knoll and Spring Meadows, the, the path goes from kind of off the road, and then when the turn lanes come into those neighborhoods, the, the path goes right out into that road. And we even have a member of our, our committee, had one of their kids was, was hit in this area, so it's certainly an area that could use improvements. We do know, we've, we've learned that DPW is going to be painting some lane markings, I think green paint kind of in those areas, which is certainly a great step, but paint doesn't keep cars from, and it's going to be a shared lane, so it doesn't keep cars from going into that lane, so ideal situ, you know, in ideal world separations, you know, but just kind of calling that out, I think those could be incremental improvements that we could look at for future paths. And then, last page we've got here is, discussions of roundabouts. I know as the community develops and we, you know, may bring certain roundabouts to, to areas in places where it's highly pedestrianized, and you've got people that are going to be walking around, so like near the village, near schools, raised crosswalks at those intersections. We've even seen local traffic engineer data that has shown it slows car vehicle speeds down 50%, which is a great safety improvement. Now, this doesn't make sense along Oak Street or up, off of like 300, where we want to move cars through roundabouts quickly, but certainly in areas where we, we want cars to slow down. It's a great thing that we, we just see in, in other peer cities. So that's the end of the, the presentation. I will, I did want to just make a comment that this last year, there are the ordinance that you guys voted on to, to change when our committee presents. I know we were presenting at the end of the year previously, it was kind of a summary of everything we had done. It was adjusted to move us to Q2, which is why we're here today. The idea was to present this and sort of roll it into budget discussions. It's our understanding that maybe some of the budget discussions started a little earlier this year. I, we just don't know if and when they start the same and if we're in the right quarter. So I just mentioned that because we don't want to be presenting stuff, and then it's like, well, we've got to put this on the shelf for next year. We're also under no delusional that, that these are going to all get picked up and funded. So we just present the ideas every year, but we want to make sure we're presenting them in the right time, so, thank you.
Thanks, Brad. I appreciate, I appreciate the presentation. I think that the, I think this is the right time, quite, quite honestly. I think in, in previous years, you know, that presentation would come after the budget's already been established, after priorities have already been set, and I think it's good to get this information in front of the administration, in front of, in front of the council, so that we can start to prioritize some of these things. I know you guys were instrumental in, in, over the last few years, even working through the Oak Street pathway, and I mean, gosh, even driving through today into town, it's like that thing, that really looks nice, and I'm really excited about that. So I think this is the right time, and I appreciate the presentation.
Yep, so make sure. Appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Up next on the agenda is a consideration of an encroachment appeal. This is at 9253 Windriff, Windriff Lane. We've got a couple of folks here, and maybe what I'll do is, I'll just introduce this as, as we've heard in the past, when, when folks want to come through and.
When, when folks want to come through and request appeals like this, if there is an appetite from that particular counselor and a path forward through the departments, that's typically when these requests would come to the council. So we have a request now, and you guys have the, the information in the packet. This is from one of the, an individual in my district. And I do think that there's, you know, Lance has submitted his, his thoughts in this and, you know, certainly he's here to, to talk through it as well. You know, I think that this particular scenario, as the petitioner's mentioned, they're purchasing property from an existing owner who put substantial landscaping that goes to the edge of the property along the easement. They would like a fence to enclose the landscaping, which means it partially needs to go into, you know, the easement, otherwise the fence would need to go through landscaping. So when we, when I reached out to Lance, you know, he did mention generally the, you know, the DPW doesn't necessarily support the drainage easement encroachments. To preserve function, character, and protect them from alterations that could interfere with the flow of stormwater to create impacts or on or to adjacent areas. Should be a highly unique situation, you know, of extreme hardships, et cetera, et cetera. And I asked him to go out and take a look at this and they, they went to the site and they looked for three different criteria, presence of underground pipes 12 inches or larger, shaped or graded overland conveyance, swales or ditches, and then identified over, overland, overland flood routing or staging area. In this particular scenario, there's a 12-inch concrete storm sewer pipe running along the side of the property within the easement and no structures should be placed in that easement. He did mention if we are inclined to acknowledge a partial request, the DPW would not object to an encroachment to the rear drain easement, generally depicted by, as you can see, the blue line in here, which just basically moves everything over a little bit. So I guess with that, with that being said, I mean, I want to give Mr. Hanger the opportunity to, to come up and, and talk through this, if you would, when you just come up and state your name and address for the record. I kind of read through your email, so there's probably not a whole lot left there, but...
Awesome. Well, thank you for having me this morning. And yeah, really the intent of the fence is safety for our kids. So when we were looking at the property, obviously the previous owner had done a nice job landscaping. And so we wanted to maintain the integrity of that landscaping as much as possible, didn't want to take out any trees, things like that. And we noticed our neighbor had gone like with their fence on the south side into that easement already. I don't know if they went through the approval process, but we were kind of just on the south side wanting to parallel their fence. And then on the east side, we wanted to encompass that or enclose that landscaping on the east side. So those are really the two key areas we're looking to get your approval for and maximize the yard space.
Is Lance saying not on the east side?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, I guess the question I would have would be the, what DPW Director Lance is saying is that they would be supportive of moving that in, I guess it sounds like inside of the trees that you're wanting to enclose. Is that your understanding as well? Is that, Lance, am I saying that right? Yeah. So it, the, the 12-inch pipe that's in there, the 12-inch concrete storm sewer pipe that runs along the side of the property, obviously that would be where he was saying no structure should be placed. And I think that's where you want to put it. So my question would be, would you be okay putting it on the inside of those trees and not on the sewer or the storm sewer pipe that runs along the property?
And yet getting the back, the back wall on the south side.
How, I guess, I haven't seen the drawing from Lance, but like how far in are we talking?
I think it's 10 feet. Whatever the difference is right here.
Is it possible to get that measured onsite so we could work with the fencing company and take a look?
Yeah, it said that he would like you to have it inspected by the stormwater division staff prior to you even doing it. So they would work with you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to looking at it. Yeah, I, I just don't know exactly where that's going to land onsite, so.
I mean, I think I'm reading 10 feet. Do I need stronger glasses? I don't know. Between the red and the blue?
Yeah. 12, I think.
What's the thing say here?
That's headed, the 12 is the spot.
Up down here, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that when, when I read these from department heads, I generally lean towards, well, I shouldn't say generally, I almost entirely agree with their perspective because they're the experts on this. I think that I would be open to Lance's point, a, how did he phrase it in here? A partial, a partial request to the encroachment and again, subject to stormwater division staff inspecting it, which would then give you a chance to decide, is it worth it or is it not worth it?
Yeah, that sounds good. I think an onsite analysis would make sense because I think there's the perspective of a partial into that space. I just don't know where that's going to land. So I, I think it makes sense for all of us to take a look.
Yeah, so I guess procedurally from here, we've never had anybody come through and get a partial request. Adam, I don't know, do we, would I motion a partial request subject to this approval or would we continue this? What would be the best move?
I would recommend that we probably do a partial, well, approve to come back with the final, final version to be voted on and then just have them work directly with the folks necessary between now and then.
I think we just continue it, right, till the next meeting. Hopefully you guys can meet in between then and then we can get a final idea after that.
Here comes Lance.
Uh-oh. What'd I say?
He already, he already knows what it is.
No, not at all. I'm just going to try and add some clarity and maybe a suggestion or direction. Lance Lance Superintendent, Director, DPW. First of all, just for clarification, we cannot go out and tell them where property lines are. We don't do surveying, so that's on the property owner to firmly establish where their property corners are. Once that's established, we're happy to go out and then measure 10 feet back. My memo to the council said that DPW would not object if they held the east fence 10 feet off of their property line. So if that is the direction you want to go, you could, I think today, make a motion to approve the request as amended by DPW. That would authorize them to go out and put into the rear yard easement, into the back, the back easement, and then hold it 10 feet off, if you wanted to get it off your agenda today. Any variations from that, then of course we'd have to restart our process. So perhaps there's a way you could get it off your docket today, but of course it could always be continued till next month, or two weeks, three weeks, whatever the next meeting is.
But you would still want the stormwater division staff to review everything?
Okay, so the comment that we inspect is when you dig your post holes, a lot of times people auger those in mechanically. In subdivisions of this age, it's very likely there are small six-inch subsurface drains out there that just pick up some groundwater, may serve as sump pump discharges. So we request that those are hand dug. If you're going to be allowed to go into any easement with a special exception, we want those hand dug and inspected to make sure we don't see any evidence of pipe material that's been disturbed. An auger, they just obliterate everything. You can't look in a hole and tell, tiny little shards of plastic. So that's, it's a safety factor to make sure that when these encroachments are considered, they don't impact someone else's pipe that's carrying sump pump, you know, effluent away from their property.
Got it. You guys have any questions for Mr. Lance?
Just a comment.
Mr. Hanger, either one.
I'll, I'll have one before this body in two weeks as well. And Lance has been very helpful and kind of a unique situation, but I just appreciate all the work that Lance's team puts into this and I appreciate that he's offering, instead of a yes or no, trying to find something that could work, that they would obviously push to us to make a final decision, but wouldn't oppose. And so I just appreciate Lance, all the work that you guys do and to, you know, when it's possible to try to find a compromise.
Any other questions or comments from counselors?
I'm comfortable with us getting it off our docket and letting them proceed.
Yeah, me too. Then I would actually make a motion to approve the partial request as amended by DPW for Mr. Hanger.
Second.
Second from Counselor Norris. So those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign.
No.
Motion passed, the six in favor, one opposed. Thank you. All right. Up next on the agenda is a consideration, an ordinance amending the 2025 salary ordinance. This is ordinance 2025-15. It is a first reading and we have Human Resource Director Joe Keel here to present.
Morning.
Good morning.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
We discovered post-November 2024 and pre-2025 that there were some inconsistencies with the ordinance salaries as listed. Most of them are due to rounding changes with Excel in our HRIS system and because of very busy dockets, we waited till May to come. So wanted to give you an opportunity to not only review that, but waive the rules, the, based on the administrative nature of this, hoping you would suspend the rules and approve the request in one sitting since you are all present. Oh, additionally, the attachment A has been edited. The salary has always been or for a long period of time, a maximum salary. Stipends are not listed as maximum and we wanted to change that verbiage to be maximum as well.
When you say it was changed for rounding, like small amounts or?
Cents.
Like a dollar here. The biggest one's $2.
Okay.
Yeah.
In total.
Darn it.
I don't know, that's not true. There's one.
We did it toward the benefit of the employee.
Actually, the fleet. That's a, I mean, it's not substantial, but it's over $1,000, Joe.
Yeah, that was one of the examples of a late in year increase in salary that did not capture it on the original ordinance.
Are there any questions for Joe? I would also, I would note, I should say that as Director Keel mentioned, there is a request from the administration to suspend the rules on this and a pass on first reading. So if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve on first reading ordinance 2025-15.
So I have a motion, I guess technically we're introducing on first reading, then we'll have to vote to suspend the rule.
Yeah, I not say that.
Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry. Okay. I introduce on first reading ordinance 2025-15.
I've got first from Counselor Norris, the second from Counselor Sampson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, seven in favor, zero opposed.
Let me do it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to suspend the rules so we could pass this on final reading ordinance 2025-15.
So we got a... I have a motion to suspend the rules from Counselor Norris, the second from Counselor Stein. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
I would like to pass on final reading ordinance 2025-15.
I got a first, so we have a motion to pass ordinance 2025-15 on, on final reading here from Counselor Norris, the second from Vice President Burke. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, the seven in favor, zero opposed. Are there any other questions or any other comments from counselors?
I do have a comment, real quick. We just had our first farmer's market of the year and it was, went off without a hitch. It was great to see all the people down there. Jennifer Lawrence from the Boone County Solid Waste Management District rang the opening bell and that was pretty significant, to be honest, because I think the farmer's market received a grant from the Boone County Solid Waste District as well. And it just was a great market and I'm glad to see Zionsville's restroom out there. We used it, my son used it. It was excellent. Silly, small things, but they're still big wins when you have that many people in an isolated area. So it was a great farmer's market, thanks to everybody involved in that.
I wanted to say congratulations to the graduates of the classes of 2025. So not just our high schoolers, but our college students as well. I've seen lots of posts on my Facebook feed of great accomplishments and we should be very proud. Our town has over 580 graduates, so it will be walking across stage on June 8.
I just would like to apologize to the council and to the Pathways Committee. I was distracted during your presentation. My daughter got in an accident on her way to school, so everything's okay, but I apologize.
All right. If there are no other matters, I will make a motion to adjourn. The second from Vice President Burke. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, the seven in favor, zero opposed. The next regular town council meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 2, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Zionsville Town Hall Council Chambers. Final notice will be posted in compliance with the Indiana Open Door Law.